I have things to add about that.
You have things to add about that?
Right, so on, I don't know when it was. Before the holiday, I called to get myself in on this week's, this today's agenda at ten. And then I got a call back saying that, uh, Wes said not to put me on the agenda. And I needed to state my reasons. And I just wanted to put on record that one, I've been doing this job since two thousand and ten. That's never been required. And so if you're gonna change it, I would like to be here for the discussion and to have that documented.
I did tell Marlene that we had too much stuff on you to get take, taken care of today. I wanted to get some of this worked out with these guys. Uh, and then I walked immediately back and said, leave the part, the subject part. We'll wait till these two have input on that, but.
So I mean, what was your kind of reasoning decide, behind deciding now that, um, I can't be on the agenda without a subject?
That been my intention to start this for some time. Because the meetings get dragged out. We have no idea what people's coming in about. What I just said, they bring groups and they set up and they disrupt the meeting. We've got a lot of stuff that we need to get over today. Be in our first meeting and we need to be working on it. Is there a reason this could not wait till Monday?
No, I'm just here for the open to the public portion of your meeting, which is basically now until noon.
Okay, that's fine.
But if you're gonna change the way the procedure works for being on the agenda for the Knox County Commission, as an entity who gets on the agenda on a regular basis, I would like to be.
Well, part of what we missed before you got here, uh, we were talking about protocol, how to run the meetings. I told these guys this was their meeting, the same as it was mine. We talked about if we was gonna try to implement, uh, Robert's rules, if we wanted, um, you know, what, how, how they wanted to change this meeting to suit what they want to accomplish. And that's what we're trying to do. So, uh, and this is a perfect example of the stuff that we've got to get through this morning. And I'd like to continue down through that. So we were talking about agendas. We were talking about what to put on the agenda. We was talking about how it's hard to have an organized agenda when we don't know what the disruptions are gonna be. I pointed out, campsats.com, I pointed out different things. Talked about maybe even more stuff on the agenda. So I guess what I'm looking for right now is what your all's thoughts are on, uh, the agendas and how stuff gets put on the agendas or not.
I don't know if, uh, just a brief why or is here is not like against, I don't know, I'm against, but I don't know that we should approve or disapprove. This is an open meeting and anybody should be able to have their five minutes. But it is nice to have heads up, I guess, like, you know, I know what here, what somebody's gonna ask you a question to kind of have a chance, you know, what they're talking about. But I guess, now that doesn't always work out.
So legal counsel uh, says, it's our meeting. Nobody goes on the agenda without, it's our agenda. And that the stuff that goes on the agenda is approved by us. We had somebody call in two weeks ago wanting to put themselves on the agenda and he said they can't do that. Or we won't go into the purposes, but I did follow up with him. And he said that it's not their agenda. It's our agenda. We approve what goes on it. We approve the time so that if we have other stuff scheduled, that we can continue the operation of our meeting.
They can at least ask to be put on or give them a day maybe when they can be put on, but it's not like.
This particular subject, I asked for Monday. Asked to push it back till Monday.
My kid, are you talking about my agenda item?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm on deadline on Monday, so that'll have to be Friday. I already told Stephanie that I can't do Monday. Friday is better for me.
So, any comment on the agendas?
I think I'd like to look into it a little bit more before I'm gonna make like a.
drastic change.
Yeah. I don't believe in coming in and just changing everything. First day, we ought to see how things go and then kind of see if something maybe needs to be changed, I guess.
See how it flows.
Right. I see points, but I'd also like to look into it a little bit and dig into it, think about it.
So when do you wanna schedule that for Monday? How much time do you need?
I'm okay with the weekend.
Uh, the next one is the minutes. Who takes the minutes? What, when, and how? And the releasing of draft minutes. I had pointed out to you guys to ask at the training, uh, about if it was the county clerk's job to take the minutes. Did you ask that question at?
We didn't. I remembered it after we all left. Dr. Bell said we should ask that. I know, was it them who said you're not supposed to release draft minutes?
Right.
May it be a motion and second and approve before the release?
I'll argue that. We sunshine request draft minutes all the time. And we get them from the school board. We get them from the cities. We get them from everyone who is legally bound by the sunshine law. Draft minutes are public meeting minutes. And, uh, frankly, when I'm under the gun and say we have something that's developing that we need public meeting information, I, if the draft minutes are not written, I will sunshine request the handwritten notes of the minutes keeper. Draft minutes are public documents.
That's what Travis said.
And they do fall under the Missouri sunshine law. Uh, so to have a policy that you don't release minutes to the public prior to them being approved by your body would be a violation. Which would be, uh, absolutely, that would be something that I would consider filing a complaint on.
Well, that's what Travis, I think it was Travis said that how they were supposed to go. The lawyer said, so that's what we heard from him.
Once again.
There are many public bodies that release their draft minutes, including closed session minutes, um, including ones with very heavy legal representation like school boards. Um, and we do get their draft minutes. So just to be on notice, that would be something that would be, uh, complaint worthy to the Missouri Attorney General's office as far as like.
Where this board meets twice a week?
It's very easy for you to send approved minutes because you guys meet so often.
Right. And legally, that's acceptable too, correct? Since we're meeting twice a week, for us to send the, to wait to send the approved minutes is legally acceptable, correct?
Um, if something controversial was happening and I needed your minutes from today and I requested them as soon as this meeting was over, I would expect to have, to receive them in the seventy-two hour time requirement from today. And you won't be able to meet to approve them again until, you know, or say, say today was Monday. You know, that seventy-two hour limit will be up before your next body. Now, if you were to get together, maybe set a special meeting and get together ahead of that seventy-two hour and go ahead and approve those and then turn them over. I'm not a lawyer, uh, but you know, for this particular board, I have not had reason to really press for unapproved me, unapproved meeting minutes. We roll them in the paper. You know, I usually do kind of like a monthly request or kind of get like a big hunk at a time and publish them. And they're usually always the approved meeting minutes. I've not had a situation like that, but just let's, uh, for example, the closed session meeting minutes for the Scotland County Hospital. Uh, during, uh, there were some meetings that were in question. Those draft minutes were minutes that I wanted to have in that as soon as possible before the board was scheduled to meet again. And, um, I think there was some hiccups and then, you know, there was also some sunshine violation complaints made during all of that. You know, it's so, I really, really depends. So.
There's legal in this as well. We've been down this path. I can share that with you. Not right now, but we can get with the attorney. And you can hear what he has to say about in our particular situation where we're meeting twice a week, whether we release the draft minutes or not. Part of the reason for that is when draft minutes get released, one person puts opinions and all kinds of into those minutes. And then they get released as our minutes. And then when we come in here and we say, well, that wasn't, disagree with that a thousand percent, but still that's been released. So we can table that until Monday as well. We're gonna be, this is going. Know we're pretty fast.
Are you talking about who's gonna be the minutes keeper?
That's, we're trying to get there.
Well, I know during this last campaign season, both of you campaigned on that you thought the county clerk should keep the minutes.
I don't know if they should, that's why I was.
I believe that, but it, I do also understand that she's not required to. So that would be her choice for one. And if she's not, I personally am just opposed to one of the three of us taking. Whether that is somebody, the clerk or somebody else. And not that I think that there's anything being done wrong. I just think that it's a better look, a better openness. If somebody that's independent from us three are taking minutes and not, even though I've been looking at the minutes that you've been taking and I've seen nothing wrong with the minutes that you've been taking. I haven't seen anything nefarious or trying to do anything wrong. I just think for optics and for transparency, that it is better that somebody besides the three of us are taking minutes. The clerk in an ideal world is, would be perfect, but if that like again, I don't believe she's required to. So that would be completely and utterly up to her. And then we'd have to go from there, you know, kind of thing. And I also feel that if the minutes that the person is writing, the, that all haven't been approved yet, if they are publicized and then we find that they're, when we do go over them that they're wrong, that's gonna be publicized too. So that's what being open is, I guess, is that, you know, we disagree with what they're saying, I guess. But I mean, it'd be the same if somebody's sitting where it goes at, listening to what we're saying. And then she puts in the paper something different. They can look at the tape or, you know, we're gonna disagree, you know, it just kind of is, but.
The meetings are wide open. There's, there's nothing, the meetings are wide open. So to participate in the meetings, but we're talking about, but I guess we'll go back to, and this is where I wanted to go. Cause I did not wanna take the minutes. Um, there's quite a bit of history as to how this came to be for me to be taking the minutes. And if we wanna go back and dig all that up, we'll dig it up. I'll show you the documents. I'll show you what went on. I'll show you how we got to this point. But I did not wanna take the minutes. So one of the things that's on my goal this morning is for, if one of you two wanna step up and take the minutes because, uh, and then what goes in the minutes, I had a session of minutes from another meeting that I participated in right recently. It's four pages of minutes. This person said this and this person said that was that. And that person, almost word for word, and I'm fine with that. If you wanna put them in there word for word, I'm fine with that. Uh, and that's, I guess where I'm at with you guys is the reason we're starting on this is I wanna know what you want in the minutes, how you wanna get the minutes taken. And then if you guys wanna do it, I'll turn it over to you. C can is in sixty days. I, I definitely figure on, or the two attorneys will be at C can. Would be an excellent time to ask them questions about this. Some minutes are votes and very, you know, not a lot of discussion. And historically, what our minutes should be here, in my opinion, is to record what was acted on, what was done. So if somebody goes back end of the year, the end of next year, wants to look something up, they can look it up and see what action was taken. To have all the side discussions and everything that went on in the room that day is not, in my way of taking minutes, is not the way I feel it should be done. Also, um, you know, who, there's just a lot of stuff, a lot of things talked about in here that don't have anything to do with the county. Exactly what minutes. So what I'm, where I'm at with the guys is I, the minutes got dumped on me. The other two, I asked them repeatedly. Uh, they didn't wanna do it. The commission minutes are our minutes. It's the way the attorney's gonna explain it to you. We met, when we meet outside this room, there needs to be minutes. We met, uh, some different people at a bridge up on the county line. We went up there and talked about how we're gonna doc. It was on a, a meeting day. There's minutes for that. How do those minutes get taken? If one of us doesn't take, as far as it being how it looks, um, the meetings are wide open. There's nobody, anybody can come in here and sit through a meeting anytime they want. They can come in, um, and ask that we grade their road or something like that. But I'm, I'm asking you guys today, does either one of you wanna take the minutes? How do you wanna proceed with this? The county clerk, she's got her job. She's got what she needs to do and she's got her hands full. I think toughest job in the courthouse is right there in my opinion. I don't think it should be the clerk. So moving on.
I've heard that in the past, clerk was supposed to be the one taking, takes the minutes. But then I've also heard she's just the guardian of the minutes.
She's the keeper of records. Uh, you take them, give them to her. If anybody comes in sunshine requesting, they request them from her. She's keeper of the records. And that's what she said in one of these, in one of our open meetings. She said, it's not my job. I'm the keeper of the records. And so I feel that it should not be the clerk. And so what I'm asking you guys today, do you wanna keep doing? I'll do it for, I'll do it to C can. Uh, that gives you guys the opportunity to get your feet down. It gives you guys a turn, opportunity to talk to attorneys. That gives you guys opportunity to, um.
Rest down there at C can.
That's the end of February. So I will continue to do it, but I'm telling you right now, I don't like doing it. I don't wanna do it. Somebody has to. And I, I go back to, if you wanna draw up a session of minutes, I did bring those minutes. Four meeting minutes. This board meets once a quarter, once a month. When was this meeting from? October the twenty-ninth. And this meeting was, uh, December tenth. Ninety days, they meet once a quarter, I guess. But if you, they've got the agenda laid out there. That's just an example of minutes that I wrote.
It looks like minutes that I see on every other group I've ever been to.
I, uh, will point out that we talked a little bit about this before and I sent you guys a text. What was that? We had a little bit of discussion about this, one of the other ten, when you all were in here. And I sent you the meeting minutes for December, the first meeting of December from twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. And I counted the lines in the minutes. And I believe there was one line difference. Commissioners present, Evan Glasgow presiding. Commissioner Luther Green, Western District Commissioner. Looks like there was only two of them here. Chris due again to go over some issues with the Rogan Bridge Department. Evan made a motion to extend Phillips' four his vacation days to the end of this year because grant submitting dates. Luther seconded the motion adjourned at noon. Obviously that was before I got here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen total lines. December third, I don't, I don't know what year it's got, but uh, once again, before I got here, Commissioners present, Evan Glasgow presiding, Commissioner Luther Green, Western District Commissioner. Commissioners approved and signed a cash lease agreement for the Bari and Hurland Seabrook Lake farm ground. Gary Mallett will begin to sign as well at, adjourned at noon. That's the total minutes, once again, before I got here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, twelve lines. Monday, December fourth. This was, uh, after I got here. Meeting called at one thirty AM. Commissioners Luther Green, Lonnie, Brian White, and Leslie Cardwell present. Minutes from twelve, one twenty-three approved. Chris in with road maintenance issues. Worked with Mark Twain to resolve issues with courthouse phones. Continued projections for twenty twenty-four budget. Meeting adjourned at noon. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Thirteen lines. There's one line, there's two thirteens and a twelve. So what, only reason I'm bringing that up is that was, I just, we talked about that. I went to that week's meetings. I believe it was the next week's meetings. Yeah, I sent it November the twenty-ninth, first meeting of December minutes for twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. So I guess the first thing that I wanna point out is that's how it has been run. Uh, it's very consistent from changing on the seats, um, and I go back to, I'll leave it up to you guys. That's why I'm asking you today, do you wanna go with minutes like that, agendas like that for every meeting? What you guys want to do.
I think that one's a lot more stuff, but it's actually just, uh, every one of them is about approving something. If we take that many votes, if we came in here and made twelve motions and have been different things, you have a twenty-five line minutes. If you come in and make two decisions, then you're gonna have three lines. Cause really, so I guess I, what I'm saying is, yeah, your, your main decisions, your main motions, your main, uh.
approvals.
Yes, approvals and decisions are what needs to be in there. Who agreed, who disagreed, or who abstained, you know? But I don't know as us talking about the weather or maybe our kids or our grandkids or whatever is necessary to be put in the minutes when we're in here. But anything that is, you know, pertinent to the county business probably should be in there. Especially when it comes to anything that's being approved or not approved or.
Or anyone that is in attendance.
Yeah.
You know, if someone comes in to have a discussion. Yeah, it isn't maybe not a voting discussion, but just the fact that they were here and like a brief synopsis of, of what they're, um, you know.
And so some, like I said, some meetings are gonna be four lines, cause nobody was here. And we just basically went through the day-to-day stuff and really, and that's a big decision to make. Cause there are days like that, I've seen from coming in, so.
You're gonna have quite a few meetings coming up where you're gonna just work on the budget.
Yeah.
It might be easier to put on a agenda, that's what we're focused on, we can't have any. These are for this, but I don't know that you can say that you can't have that either.
Right, not, well, I don't wanna discourage anybody from coming into any meeting. I think it, I think it'd be great if they had some people that showed interest in all the, I've done several different boards and always thought that, you know what I mean? It's, it is good to have people come, but they don't always do it, especially us being in the, during the week in the morning. There's a lot of people that aren't gonna be able to come. So our minutes are what, how they're keeping up with what we're doing.
What I'm saying is they can't deny them coming, but they can't always have their time to see what they want to say. Might be occupied with other public issues or something. That's how I'm trying to word it. That's how I'm trying to word it. But also, if you find somebody to take your minutes, if you're gonna be able to afford and find that's reliable and trustworthy at doing so.
I would point out that for thirteen years, Marlene and/or Stephanie took the county commission minutes. It wasn't until what, about a year ago, that they stopped.
Who took the minutes?
Marlene and/or Stephanie, her deputy, or one of her other deputies.
Well, see that, there's some conflicting stuff in there.
And also Michelle. You know, Michelle did take a fair amount of minutes after she came in.
When I got here, it was, we, we won't go into all that, but anyway.
We have a tech whiz on our board for the Sunshine Coalition. And there is a digital, I don't know the name of it, but there's actually like, kind of like a, a minute-keeping bot that not only, that records the audio of the meeting and preserves it, and then turns that into meeting minutes. Um, that might be something to investigate.
I'm a, I'm a hundred percent in favor personally. And I wouldn't go, I asked for you guys, I've set one of those three sixties in the middle of the room that records every word. And it'll look at you when you start to talk, it'll point at you. It goes around the room. I'm a hundred percent comfortable with that.
One way out, the training meetings are named, is it audio?
They audio, all of their meetings. And then the audio goes directly onto their website. Where you can listen to it. At any time, you can go on the website and listen to the minutes and you listen to every word that it said. Unless, unless it goes to a closed meeting for proper procedure or whatever, but.
Was it just audio or is it video? I never.
It was, theirs was just audio.
No video.
Right, no video.
There's pretty, there's a pretty big space requirement for video, so you'd have to have some sort of plan for that, like if, uh, if you're gonna have like a server. You, you might want to invest in a server to hold all that space. And then I will tell you that once you have those records, then it's on the commission to preserve them and make them publicly available, or whatever public body. And that's one of the things that kind of shied some of the smaller, boards away from doing that, because then there's the crux of preserving and making publicly available. If it was to do something like, be livestreamed and then automatically listed, I, uh, I'm a huge proponent of that. Uh, also, life would be a lot easier if everything, if everyone put their minutes on their website. So when someone sent them a sunshine request, they could say, here they are, you know what I mean? They're already, you know, here's the, uh, here's the path to access that. I've long dreamed to try to be able to do that on NemoNews.net, or maybe Edinasentinel.com. The problem, as far as to add the service to public boards, and that's still kind of hanging in the, wannadue realm. Uh, the problem I'm having is just my time availability to be able to just invest in all of that uploading and obtaining and all of that.
I think it's something we should definitely look into. Cause I'm not opposed to having, at the very least, audio recorded during a meeting. I'm not trying to hide anything from anybody.
Be that much, one of those things that person definitely paid to hear and do it.
Well, it's the same. Records, it's gonna be a pain.
Right, that's why I say it needs to be looked into and explored all the way around. Cause it's not just something you jump in, if you want to do it right, if we're gonna have any.
Hold back, we'll get to that subject in a little bit. As far as security on the courthouse, as far as, uh, security and fire detection. Will, that'll be further down the list. But how do you feel about that throughout the rest of the courthouse? How do you feel about the same thing at the county barn where we've got uh, video and smoke detectors out there where the building gets on fire? Because one of the things I've always done is try to keep my assets spread out. The assets the county barn have, one fire could burn everything we got. So I think there should be smoke detection out there. Uh, there's gonna be some problems. We'll, we'll get to that later. Just be thinking on security for the courthouse, video, audio, and smoke detection. Cause that's something that will tie into this. If we're gonna do it in this office, why would we not do it on the rest of the building? So, uh, I guess we're, we're right back here where we keep trying to get, I, where I'm at with the minutes, and don't want to do them, I don't care. For the most part, don't co, don't care how we do them, who does them. There is some history that, depending on which path we go down, that history needs to be dealt with. But I'm asking you guys today, do, do one of you want to take the minutes?
No.
I'd rather not. But I'm not saying that we can't. But I think that purposes of, one of us is gone. Then if somebody else, the one that takes minutes is gone, and somebody else takes it, they're a little different. Okay, one of those three sixty things that be here for everybody, but that's also.
Here is the minutes from last week. I'll take another copy. Luther. Luther or not, Luther, let's hear those check, spell it.
That's not urgent.
This is where we're at with the way the minutes are currently taken.
I'm just here, I'm not.
Huh?
I'm just here.
You're recording?
Yeah, but it's public meetings.
Oh, okay. I know, I know they were kind of, got kind of a bad time. Here's yours. And this is to you. You need to sign, is there anything? Nope, nope, you're here. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Yep. Those are the minutes. This is the part where you get to add or subtract or change anything that you want to in those minutes. Those minutes are not railroaded, they're not. You guys were both here for the entire meeting. No, you wasn't here for the very first part, when we approved the, the cyber, the first thing that morning. But this is the part where if you guys look at those minutes, you think there's stuff that needs to be added, deleted, spell checked. This is where you point out, you disagree with the minutes or approve the minutes. So what we've got to decide today is how we're gonna take the minutes today and tomorrow. We don't have, like I said, I don't care if you guys want to wait one more meeting. Or if you want to wait till CCM. Or what your plan is, but we need a plan. And I'm telling you, I don't want to take them. There's, uh, stop the who does what, and how stuff gets done, and anyway, I don't want to take the minutes.
I do think if you're willing to take them until we go to the training here in February, that it'd be, I think that's, gives us time to find other options. I mean, like I said, just start first day. We haven't had a chance to actually be able to, you know, we have goals and we both have talked about what we'd like to see, but liking to see it and putting it into reality are two different things, and it's gonna take a little bit of time, so I appreciate that you're willing to take them until then, and I think you should until then, and let us give a, give us a chance to try to come up with some different options.
Where are you at on that?
Feels like a lot of table a little bit.
Well, really not. I mean, this was a decision. However, I'll take the minutes for sixty days. We'll revisit it after we come out of CCM. But I just, we needed stuff in place. Today is that you guys, it's your meeting, same as it's mine. And, uh, it's three votes, it's three. I don't, I, I told, I, I think really, I don't think it's gonna be, it's gonna be a little frustrating, and I've dealt with this with the, with Ronnie and Luther. When you come in, you think you know stuff. And then you find out, oh, we can't do that, we can't do that. And that's not how that's supposed to be, and it's, uh, not the county clerk's job to take the minutes. You get into that stuff. When, when that question was asked of you at the candidate forum, did you know it was not, did you know?
No, that she didn't ask you, no.
Yeah. So, did you? So that's the kind of stuff where gossip and, uh, misinformation gets us off the path. And then when you get here, you find out, well, this is how it is, and that's not how it works.
Uh, what I'm looking at here is a, I think, uh, that three sixty camera, I don't even know. Got a microphone and a camera.
You need to assign these in if we agree.
Yeah, that's the way it's been done.
Uh, one of them, you just assigned one of them?
Yeah, one of them, well, shred, just so that where there's no duplicate. Only, uh, one Marlene keeps, and that's the other thing. You keep that one. If it's not signed, it's not, it's worthless.
This thing here says the video works in a ten-foot radius and the audio is an eighteen-foot radius.
It looks like you have a lot of them.
Marjorie, I've got a lot to do today, so I don't think I'm gonna stay much longer. I just wanted to come in and see the first session of the new board, you know? Um, and I'm glad I showed up when I did, because um, I definitely do have a dog in a fight for the agenda items.
Well, we want to do it right.
Yeah.
John and I agree on that. I think that we just want to do what the right thing for, and transparency, both of us talked about that during our candidacy or whatever, so I know that's important to both of us, and.
I just always heard in the previous, the clerk was the one that's supposed to be the minutes, but then also people, other people said, no, she's not, she's just the guardian of them, so.
I think it's, um, it really differs everywhere. I think, um, in some counties, it's fairly, it's just common practice for the county clerk to keep, take and keep the minutes. You'll, I, and I encourage you to call your counterparts in, in, in other counties, because that's something that's very common for commissions, is to have these discussions with other commissions, um.
Yeah, cause there's no sense in reinventing it.
Yeah, and so, and, and it differs, just kind of everywhere, so you'll, I mean, if you just reach out, you'll be able to get kind of like a good mix of what, what's done and why it's done that way and, and how it works and all of that. Like, that's one great thing about like MAC.
Yeah.
Is you really have a network of people who've you, you're not reinventing the wheel, you're able to like.
Yeah.
It's interesting that this road use, or you know, the road disagreement for the win project is sitting here, because this would be a perfect example of how that really shined. Of this, like, inter-county cooperation between commissions really led to like the most solid win contract that this state had ever seen up to this point, you know, and that was from, that was because all of the input they collected. From people who've been through it.
Yeah.
You know? So I'm gonna go ahead and wrap up my video. Welcome to office, gentlemen. Welcome back, Wes, to twenty twenty-five, this first meeting. I feel like you guys are off to a good start. Uh, do you have any questions for me or anything before I turn this off and peel out?
Thank you.
Okay, and then of course I've got your swear-in things and all of that will be in next week's paper. And then I will get this uploaded as soon as possible. I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, sign this off for now. I'm Echo Mendez for the Edinasentinel and NemoNews.net. Um, and today is Friday, January third, twenty twenty-five. Signing off for now. Thanks for watching.